Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Wow, that was a really, really good pledge, huh? Love that.
That was a good one.
Our thought for the day is Proverbs 28 through 10. When a king sits in judgment, he weighs all the evidence distinguishing the bad from the good. Who can say, "I have cleansed my heart, I am pure, free from sin"? False weights and unequal measures, the Lord detests double standards of every kind. Well, thank you everybody and welcome to our July 31st special meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. We're here this morning for a special meeting to address the issue that is eroding our nation, our state, our county, and so many of our families and friends: drugs. We have been fighting the war on drugs for far too long, and I have to say, it's gotten worse, way worse. We pick up the paper every day and we see way too many young people dying. We keep trying to get ahead of this and it finds another way to defeat us. I've been to many of the opiate forums and have seen the families that have lost their addicts to this disease, either lost in their addiction or lost because they died. Either way, it's heartbreaking. It's hard to find a person that has not been negatively impacted by this crisis. There's not a magic bullet for this problem, and we have lots of tools to combat this, and it's our hope that this effort will be one that will truly make a difference. We've encountered increased drug trafficking. In the fall of 2016, Lorraine County was designated a high-intensity drug trafficking area, a federal designation determined to be a critical drug trafficking region in the United States. Lorraine County became one of 13 out of 88 counties to have this designation, and it's one that we don't want and we need to stop. We are glad to have a team here to share an update on our war on this epidemic presented by several of our frontline leaders working tirelessly to counter this crisis, one that doesn't discriminate, one that is affecting innocent lives in our community. The Commissioners would like to introduce and support a plan of action that calls together federal, state, county, and community resources in an unprecedented way to work collaboratively and effectively to combat this growing crisis. So it's my pleasure to introduce our Sheriff, Phil Stomidi, and Chief Deputy Kavanaugh. And guys, I turn it over to you to do the briefing portion of our agenda. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us today. Sheriff and I were up here not too long ago, and we kind of thoroughly discussed all the problems we've been having. Unfortunately, nothing's getting any better. It's getting worse, okay? Our rate of death is getting pretty high. I know Doc Evans is going to probably talk about that. Our fentanyl problem is overtaking the heroin problem. It's come in so many different variations, it's kind of hard for Emmy to keep up with and get the standards to identify. So there's kind of a group of all of us trying to work together on these problems besides the federal agents that you just see in this room. But just to give you somewhat of an idea, as of last year, 2016, we had probably the highest rate we ever had, 131 deaths. So far this year, we're at 67 deaths with six more pending tax reports. In addition, that from 911 reported, as of July 24th, we had 570 overdose deaths, or overdoses, reported that police, fire, or EMS responded to. That's a staggering rate, 570. And that's probably at a minimum, because sometimes families have Narcan, they do themselves, they're not going to the hospitals, you're getting reported, or those living, you know, out on the outskirts of our county may go into St. John's or go into Cuyahoga County. Those stats aren't here, so this is a minimum report that's being there. In addition to that, you know, we've concentrated so much on the heroin, none of the other narcotics have disappeared. They're still there. They're still prevalent. But a somewhat of a trend we were seeing last year, and I know Doc Evans is going to cover this better, we're starting to see cocaine and fentanyl together with the death rate. It started increasing in the fall, so far unfortunately, this is increasing this year at even a higher rate. And that's unsuspecting people who are not anticipating fentanyl being put in there. And I know the DA is going to explain that a little bit more on the national and international standard as we go, but I can only anticipate that overdose rates are going to increase even into this other area, besides the problems we're having with the opioids and all the fentanyl we have right now, so.
Morning Commissioners and gentlemen. As my Chief Deputy Dennis Kavanaugh, you know he runs the Drug Task Force and he does a fantastic job, but this thing's bigger than all of us right now, and like this is across the nation and across the world, actually. You know, as we said before, we cannot arrest our way out of this. The answer's not building bigger jails and prisons, that's not the answer. A lot of users unfortunately get hooked on this stuff, and I know Doc Evans will touch on this too, if you're starting out with some prescription medications that, you know, somebody legitimately has surgery and they get this oxycodone, and then eventually, you know, they don't get any more pills, and then they're looking for something else to relieve some of the pain, and these dealers will actually give it to you for free or charge you five bucks to get you. Couple times you use it and you're hooked on it. And, you know, often a grand jury comes in or other people when I'm giving talks, you know, they always talk about, "Well, what are you trying to save these bums and, you know, let's let them go?" And, you know, unfortunately, a lot of these people are 18 to 40 years old that are getting hooked on this stuff, and I told them, "These aren't your normal drug dealer that you're thinking about in some back alley somewhere. These are our sons and daughters that are getting hooked on this stuff." I just saw the other day one of the marriage, I think, in Nashville, Tennessee, her son just overdosed and died. Kid was a scholar in college. I mean, it happens unfortunately, and we're human, we make mistakes. And unfortunately, sometimes they're a fatal mistake when it comes to these type of drugs. And as the Chief says, they're starting, this fentanyl, it's easy to make, you know, it's synthetic, they can do it, they're mixing it with anything you can get. Sometimes people think they're getting heroin, they're not getting it. You know, they're getting straight fentanyl, and Doc will attest to this too. We find them with the needles still in their arms. I mean, that's how fast it goes, their heart stops their heart, and they're gone, you know, respiratory things. We do believe in Narcan in this county, I believe it as a sheriff, that we got to try to save people. I always tell everybody, "I'm not God, I don't decide who lives and dies." Obviously, if the person's already expired, you're not bringing them back, but if they're in respiratory arrest, giving them Narcan, we'll bring them back. And I know some people argue, "Well, you bring them back and they start fighting with you." Sometimes they fight with you anyways. It's just one of the things that the officers understand, that part of it. But I'm glad that this collaborative has come together. I'm happy to have DEA as a partner with the other agencies. Lorraine County is lucky to be designated as a HIDA agency. I've been Sheriff 17 years now, and I've tried for 17 years to get that designation. And I thank Marcy Captain and some of the other people in Washington that helped us get this designation, so. But I think this collaborative of us working together is going to give us some funding, it's going to give us some equipment, it's really going to help us fight the drug dealers, because we are a pipeline with 80 and 90 running through Lorraine County between New York and Chicago. That's where these guys are hauling this stuff back and forth, and some of them are dumping off in Lorraine County, so. But I know there's a lot of other people want to speak here, but I'm glad that we have this effort going forward. Chief.
Just as a side note too, just the Narcan, we were the pilot county to get it with a lot of hard work from people getting this passed for us, and since that was October of 2013, I think there's been well over 300 saves by law enforcement alone, so. And that's probably on the low end too, so, just as a FYI.
Good morning.
Morning.
Much of what I'm going to tell you, you've already heard, you just heard a lot of it from the Sheriff and the Chief Deputy. We have a clear problem with, we used to say opiates, but it's expanded with the cocaine mixing in with fentanyl. So we have a clear problem with a serious drug problem going on in our community. Unfortunately, it's not just our community, it's the entire state and it's the entire country, but it is definitely heavy here. I know that our numbers are more than, well, they're more than what they were last year, and last year they were double the year before. So we're on a very poor track of trying to attack this, and we need to do it through multiple ways of doing it. We can't just go at it one way, and with this and what they're setting up, it gives us multiple ways to attack it, and I'm not going to go into details about that, but it's just better for what's going on, it's a better way to do things. So we support, I know Sal Rivera from Lorraine supports, so we're just going to take these steps and move forward.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention one thing, I did get a phone call from Chief Sal Rivera from Lorraine Police Department. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it today, but he wanted me to reiterate that he's behind a collaborative effort 100%. Obviously, he wants to work with us, with Elyria, and the Chiefs Association. I can tell you, the Lorraine County Chiefs Association are all behind us too, because we want to work with all of them. I mean, nobody can do these jobs by themselves, we have to work together because we do have limited resources, but Chief Rivera wanted to apologize, but he's behind us 100%.
Thank you. Just for clarification, anyone coming up to the podium, just to make sure that you state your name and what organization that you're with as we go forward, so.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is James Goodwin, I'm the Resident Agent in Charge of the Cleveland District Office for the Drug Enforcement Administration. We are, I am responsible for 12 counties Northeast Ohio, and this is my partner, Group Supervisor Eric Kokonowski. He's a group supervisor that's responsible for west of the city, or City of Cleveland, Cuyahoga, and then south, surrounding counties. The Drug Enforcement Administration has been working with the Drug Task Force for, ever since the inception. But the reason I'm here today is to promote a couple items. Number one would be the Ocidiv Heroin Initiative. We have a huge problem, and I can tell you the bad news right now, it's getting worse. Our current intelligence is indicating that it's not going to get better anytime soon. With the introduction of fentanyl and cocaine and different drugs, it's now reaching a different part of the society. So that's the bad news. The good news is that we haven't worked as well in history. All federal, local, state, and local departments are coming together. I left country for two years right when it started to peak. I remember meeting with Emmy prior to my departure. I come back and we are all working together. We work a lot in Cuyahoga County, Cleveland Police, Cuyahoga County, all the communities in Cuyahoga County working together, as well as Lorraine County. The Ocidiv Heroin Initiative is federal money. Typically, it's for a particular case, one specific case. A year ago, the federal government came up with the Ocidiv program for heroin in general, which means it's not just a specific target or case. We could respond to any fatal or non-fatal, and the federal government will reimburse that overtime. Part of that program, for example, in Lorraine County, we have seven departments that are part of the program, 26 task force officers. We swear the task force officers in under Title 21 authority, the drug, federal drug crimes. We have Lorraine, Amherst, Avon Lake, North Ridgeville, Vermillion, Avon, and Wellington. They're all participating in this program. Anytime there's a fatal or non-fatal, officers will respond, collect information and intelligence. And what we deal with, we deal with intelligence. A lot of telephone numbers and specific information. We currently have two full-time intelligence analysts. One from the National Guard, or anti-drug or counter-drug narcotics program, and we also have a DEA intel analyst at the HIDA in Brooklyn, Ohio. They work full-time, every day analyzing the data that we collect. What we're trying to promote right now is more involvement throughout our whole area, Northeast Ohio, more involvement in the heroin initiative. With that comes the full-time analysts, deconfliction, and participation in the Case Explorer Program. All the intel goes into a database. Our intel analysts analyze that. They're at a point now of two years of data collection to predictive analytics. They're now coming up with target packages. We have a problem now. We have a problem, we're now identifying targets that are linked, two degrees, three degrees, from fatals and non-fatals. We don't know what to do with that information. We try to give it to Cleveland Police Department. Whoa. We had seven overdoses last night. We don't have time or resources to go investigate this person. So we're now at a problem, we're creating these target packages, we need to pass them out. We're starting to see that same problem, which is a good problem, because we're kind of getting ahead of it, we're identifying targets. If we'd like to do the same thing in Lorraine County, pass those target packages out to those specific police departments. The next thing I'd like to promote is the Lorraine HIDA. For all these years, we've tried to get a HIDA here. Well, now we finally got it. We were deemed HIDA in October. With that comes federal resources, manpower. You have to have a federal partner, and DEA is that federal partner. We're going to be coordinating closely with the Sheriff's Department and the Drug Task Force. The other item is you have to be multi-agency, so it just can't be the Drug Task Force. It has to be all the partners and participating agencies in the county, so we need more officers from different departments represented. Part of that is deconfliction. HIDA has a well-known, very respected deconfliction system, essentially blue on blue. Anytime we open up an investigation, we have to put the information into the system, and that protects, blue on blue, police on police. You'll deconflict it, is there another agency working that target, that suspect, even that location? So that's a very good system. Part of that system goes back to the heroin initiative, it's the same database, all the information goes into. Funding, resources. Every year, we have a budget. We also have DEA resources. I hate to say this, but if you build it, we will come. If there's a suitable location, a suitable building, a suitable office, a place that we could bring more agents into, more task force officers into, that's what we want to do. The current situation now is just not feasible. We cannot add more bodies to that location. And Group Supervisor Kokonowski could talk a little bit more about our resources and what the DEA's plan is in the future.
Thank you. Eric Kokonowski, as Jim discussed, my group covers Lorraine, I also cover Akron and Summit, and so what we'd like to do out here is similar to what we're currently doing in the Summit County area. And we have a facility where all the task forces are under one roof, multiple agencies, DEA has seven personnel, task force and agents there, and so all the cases are worked jointly, deconflicted, and so it's a force multiplier for the community. You have smaller PDs that don't have the resources to have a full narcotics unit, they can put someone on there, and that allows them to have a full narcotics unit to target the individuals that are disrupting our communities. So out here, we have one agent currently, we have another one that will be reporting next week that is going to be assigned out here, and then we have a third that will be coming back from overseas that we would like to put out here. Once we get that up and running, we have two task force officers which are from different state and local PDs that will be here, and then we have three additional spots that we want to fill and put co-located at the HIDA. Again, as a force multiplier, working with the Lorraine community. Additionally, DEA is looking at putting an air wing unit in place out here, which allows us and assists us in surveillance, assists us in reconnaissance prior to conducting our investigations. And so we are in the works of trying to make that happen. And then additionally, moving forward, we would equip or put our computer system out here, our Title III or wire intercept system, our telephone communication exploitation system, so it'll add resources to the community, to the HIDA, to the team as it is.
Well, one more final thing to add is that every year we promote the Drug Take Back, and this year's Drug Take Back Medicine Cabinet is October 28th.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you up next, Emmy?
I'm Emmanuel De Leon, I manage the Lorraine County Crime Lab. I'm here to speak about the statistics, the drugs that we have analyzed for the last two years, and hopefully that this will help us understand what Chief Deputy Kavanaugh had mentioned, Sheriff Stomidi, and the DEA team.
Take what you have to ask.
Global number of drug users, in 2015, ecstasy users, what, 22 million, fentanyl and opioid users, 37 million. Compared that to 2014, we have a 7% increase in users in one year. At current levels, world heroin consumption and seizures represent an annual flow of 430 to 450 tons into the global heroin market. The top three analyzed drugs in Lorraine County, I put this in a bigger, in a bigger group, because there's so many drugs that I have to discuss, but let me only discuss the top three. The MMDs, the multiple mixed drugs for 2015, 2014, those are synthetic opioids that are highly addictive and users can quickly develop a tolerance, pushing them to look for higher potencies and eventually higher quantities. Multiple mixed drugs that we have analyzed may contain up to controlled substances, and you're going to find out in a few minutes here what those multiple drugs that we have analyzed right here in Lorraine County. This is the comparative drug trends nationwide, state, and also Lorraine County. Looking at the predominant drugs selected for this comparative study between the federal, state, and county levels for the first half of 2016, our counties showed 51% of cocaine, followed by heroin at 51%, and followed by heroin at 41%. And thirdly, it's between fentanyl and also marijuana. Notice that cocaine is back to the top spot in our county. Top spot in our county. There's an increase of 30% in the number of cases during the first half of 2016 and 2017, with a slight increase in the number of bags that we have received from the Lorraine, from law enforcement agencies. At this point, it's still early to tell if this will continue to go up or remain the same, but with the numbers of submissions we're receiving in the laboratory, I can assure you that it will go up. It will go up. What is alarming is the total number of multiple mixed drugs. If you will see the multiple mixed drugs, it represents, it represents 61% of the analyzed drugs in Lorraine County, multiple mixed drugs. 61% here in Lorraine County. Some of those examples of those multiple mixed drugs we analyzed include what was called gray death. I don't know if someone would like to buy a drug that says gray death, but they did, and they do. This is a combination of drugs called U47700, which was first identified in Lorraine County. Heroin and fentanyl, those are the three combinations, they call it gray drug. But we have more worse drugs that we have identified. In addition to those three compounds, also the three MF, or confentaline is also added to those drugs. And it really, those are the things that we have noticed in the laboratory. And you can see that the majority of the drugs we analyzed were composed of several compounds. Because of this, what kills people is what they don't know. They buy heroin, they really don't know what's in that substance. We do, and they're up to those controlled substances. Confentaline, as you have heard, is an elephant sedative, but what makes a potion is the dosage. So it depends on the mixture. Is it confentaline more than fentanyl or heroin or U47700? This is how they mix those drugs. Those drug chemists who doesn't have any job after they graduate, and guess who recruits them? The drug dealers. This is how and the reason, one of the reasons why those drugs are being combined with so many, so many, so many compounds. Because of the volume being submitted to us, we have to keep up with the demands of testing them efficiently. We purchased an autoloader station for our instrument, approved by the commission through Mr. Cordes earlier this year. Our current turnaround time now is two weeks for the routine testing instead of up to two months of backlog from last year, because of this introduction to the autoloader station. A more urgent case is completed within 48 hours, if not on the same day of submission. Fatal overdoses are run or analyzed automatically in the laboratory. Once we know that it is a fatal overdose case, we analyze that drug right away, and if they are submitted in the laboratory at nine o'clock in the morning, it will be done before the end of the day. With this autoloader, we can test up to 150 samples per day, and pretty much most of the time, we run those samples overnight so that we can efficiently satisfy those submissions. And compared to only 48 samples per day before we purchase this autoloader station. So we're keeping up. I don't want to tell you, bring them on, but we are ready for, to fight this epidemic. So far, just to let you know that there are more than 50 fentanyl analogues known to us, 50. And right now, there's only a handful of them are considered scheduled substances, only a handful of them, there's 50 of them. So therefore, if we have 50 fentanyl analogues and that comes into Lorraine County, we cannot identify them, nor we can report it out unless we have the standard for that specific substance. And that's where the cost of the lab that goes up. We cannot report them out without the standard. The 2016 law enforcement number of cases submitted versus the number of bags submitted, let me just explain a little bit as far as the number of bags. The number of bags is one of those things that when law enforcement agencies or narcotics evidence officers submits to us a baggie, a baggie of that could have, again, up to four controlled substances, okay? 43.5 increase in the total number of cases between 2015 and 2016. 44% increase in the total number of cases. And with this chart, it's really hard to see, but you can tell that all Lorraine County law enforcement agencies submit all of those controlled substances, and the number of cases are shown in this chart. Now, there's also 43% increase in the total number of bags between 2015 and 2016. I work directly with Chief Deputy Sheriff Dennis Kavanaugh of the County Drug Task Force of the Sheriff's Office in coordinating and determining the type of threat from these drugs that could be present in our county. Anything that we identify that is new, not really new drug, but newly coming into Lorraine County, I share that information right away to Chief Deputy Kavanaugh, and also some of the Narcotics Team Division, so that they know what's going on in our county. Warn the public and move forward with what the law enforcement is about to do. So we provide that information, and I work directly with Chief Deputy Kavanaugh. Lastly, the first half of 2017, this is only estimated so far, and this is not complete by any means when I say estimated, because when I took the number, these are all based on the number of substances we have identified so far, but the first half, actually, June was not done completely yet. So just to give you an idea, that it's still, the multiple mixed drugs are still on top of our lists, and as you can see, cocaine is up there, 215. Marijuana is basically down to the bottom of that list. I don't know why, I'm maybe... I don't know why, and maybe someone else can explain about that. In my observation and experience managing the laboratory, the heroin epidemic is becoming a social cancer, so malignant that it inflames and causes agonizing, agonizing pains in our society. For many addicts, drugs are a way to relieve physical or emotional pains. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw Dennis Will come in, our county prosecutor, Dennis, did you want to come up next?
Well, Dennis, you were part of the law enforcement piece, so if you want to, we just went into where we were, so if you want to finish up that piece before we go further, probably keep continuity in that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you taking me out of order, so to speak. I guess I haven't heard everybody else's presentation, but we've been enough in communication in this county through different law enforcement agencies, coroner's office, and all the other resources, ME at the lab, to know that we, we got a big battle on our hands. I mean, all we have to do is look at the numbers we're dealing with, and the ancillary cases that come into the prosecutor's office that have some relation to the drug epidemic, okay, has just continued to grow. I mean, there isn't anything that we don't see, whether it's at the criminal level, children's services level, child support level, or any other aspect that we deal with that hasn't been impacted by this issue. You know, we've gone to several of the different forums, and we've talked about this, that if you haven't been affected by this, just wait, because sooner or later you will. Somebody you know, or someone that's in your family, or someone that knows your family is going to sometime be affected by it. I can tell you, I, I lived through the cocaine epidemic back in the early nineties when we dealt with crack cocaine, and we thought that was bad, and it was, but the difference between that and this is that had more possible dangerous activities going with it, more violence, but this is a more lethal problem. I mean, here, we've just got people going down left and right. I mean, I guess when you, when the Lorraine PD, I remember when they first started using Narcan, when Dr. Evans came up with the program, I was a little bit surprised. I thought we would see some saves in that, but I never thought we would see what we've seen to date. And when the Lorraine Police Narcotics Unit is actually watching a buy go down, and the people get back into the car, and they're getting ready to arrest them, and they use it, and then they all fall out of the car, and they had to save all of them, I mean, that tells you how much it impacts everybody, both on a law enforcement level and on a personal level. And if we don't get our hand on this, if we don't do something collectively, that we're not going to be able to deal with it. I can tell you, I think we're lucky in this county, I just came back from a meeting at the Prosecutor's Association, that we have a very cooperative effort here, you know, as I indicated, Dr. Evans was the person that came up with the idea of, you know, equipping people with Narcan to be able to be the first line saving. And then the law enforcement agencies in this county have banded together. We've gotten support from the commissioners through the crime lab so that ME can help us, and I know that that's a big advantage for us, as he indicated, when it gets something that comes new into the county that we don't know about, and even if it's something he doesn't have the standard for, he lets us know right away, which allows law enforcement to get the word back out on the street. So all I can tell you is, is any collective effort that you put together, any utilization of economic forces, which is a force multiplier, which is, I think, what this will do, that we're going to have a better impact than what we've been having thus far. Will we have the total impact? I guess only time will tell how we deal with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Let everybody know who you are, Elaine K.
Good morning, I'm Elaine Jargus, I'm the Executive Director of the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County. I want to thank you for including our board and all of the partnerships we're connected to, to help combat this epidemic in Lorraine County. One of the things that we have to continue to do is educate about addiction. Addiction is a chronic disease, and just like heart disease, diabetes, and cancer, it can be fatal if left untreated. Research shows that four out of five heroin users started using with any prescription medication. So the link between, you know, having a drug takeback to get drugs out of homes and connecting that to the heroin use that we're finding through law enforcement and on the streets is so significant. We also know that only one in ten people that need treatment get access to it. So the work we're doing in partnership with our treatment and recovery support providers is as important as the enforcement side. It's part of the continuum that we all have to do together. And the strongest other part that we need to make sure that we're attended to is prevention. Nine out of ten people who become addicted started using any substance before age eighteen. So some of the work, you know, may not be directly impacted by today, but you'll see in a bit that we are, you know, arm in arm, working together. This statistic from the Center for Disease Control is still current, I think, for every overdose death in 2010. You know, there are seven-hundred-and-thirty-three non-medical users, and looking at the overdose deaths of one-hundred-and-thirty-one, we can see that there are over ninety-six thousand people in our community misusing opioids in Lorraine County, whether it's heroin or a prescription drug. So as the theme you've heard, it's not what we're used to from the seventies of the heroin epidemic or the cocaine epidemic. These are people that have happened to have come up on a prescription drug most of the time that have turned to heroin and other substances that they don't know what they're purchasing out on the streets. According to the Addiction Policy Forum, there are one-hundred-and-forty-four people dying every day of this epidemic, so, you know, we need to get our hands on this. If there was any other situation of that many people dying every day, I think we'd be more urgent than we've been over the last four years, and again, I appreciate the stepping up today to getting this taken care of. In June, a recent report from Health Day News showed the, that each heroin user costs society nearly fifty-one thousand dollars a year. Let's pause to think about that. That's higher than any other chronic illness, and the cost of the epidemic is estimated at seventy-eight billion dollars in our nation. We need to look at productivity, we need to look at families, we need to look at the impact on enforcement, our jails, and just our society at large. So our board's in it statutorily, but we're also in it as a partner. This past biennial budget, the governor signed into law designated our board as, or all boards, as a county hub program to combat opioid addiction. So we're connected with strengthening efforts to prevent and treat addiction. Also, to educate youth and adults, we'll do that more stronger than ever, promote family building, workforce development, we need to do that to combat, and to encourage community engagement, which I think we've done well, and we just need to do that a little bit tighter. We're also connected through the county's Health Improvement Plan, which the partners tried five years ago to reduce overdose deaths by twenty-five percent. We weren't together on that, we need to get back together on that, to get this number down to, you know, no deaths in Lorraine County. In fact, the North Family Foundation has stepped in to invest in what they're calling a system-wide audit for Lorraine County, and they're going to look at every partner that has something to do with opioid from prevention to intervention, and they're bringing in a federal partner to help do that for Lorraine County. So we have philanthropy invested, we've got government, we've got private and public partners coming to the table. We have four strategies we're working on, reduce the availability of opiates, and that's two arms. That's law enforcement, and that's also with the medical community. We've got to get that off the streets, we've got to get our prescribers to, to ramp up and start enforcing that more. Providing support to addicts and families, it's got to be about Narcan and beyond. A family member whose loved one was saved from Narcan, it's giving their loved one a chance to live another day. If we can't give that opportunity to families, we have no hope for their families to be together. We've also got to look at vicarious trauma of our first responders. They're on the streets every day, they're facing this, as Prosecutor Will talked about. Every day, they're, they're in a situation, if we don't take care of the trauma that our community's facing about this, you know, we're numb to the stories in the paper anymore, and we've got to start turning the page on that. That also means enhancing treatment and recovery supports for people that can get into treatment. Prevention and education to target audience, there's a stigma out there that's pretty significant. You can read any story, and they talk about just let them die. I don't know of any other disease where we would look and just support a let them die mentality. So we've got to educate, break the stigma of addiction, and we also have to find ways to do effective population education, like the drug takeback. Every one of our police departments has a twenty-four-seven drop box, you can drop back your medications any day, anytime in your communities. Little things that can make a big difference. Advocacy, the work of advocacy is so significant. The advocacy, you know, indirectly, now we're a Hyda community, we've got resources, we've got, from our pilot, people paying attention to what we could do collaboratively in Lorraine County. So, you know, it's time to capitalize on that evermore, and so I'm proud to be here. We are working with local emergency rooms, soon we'll kick off the warm handoff where an overdose survivor taken to the ER will be connected to a peer immediately. That's starting tomorrow at one of our local hospitals, we've got two other hospitals ready to go. On August eleventh next week, we've got the Quick Response Team Training for our first responders, including law officials. The Attorney General's Office just let out some grant opportunities that we're working with local police departments to get that going, and we just, Friday, submitted a grant federally through the CARE bill to get a first response on the treatment and the intervention and outreach side. So, thank you for having me, and I'll be part of this partnership, and open for any other questions you have.
Thanks.
Great partner, Elaine, you do good work.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Christina Bolguerilla, I am a caseworker with Children's Services, and also a licensed independent social worker. I've been working with our community's families who are affected by male treatment for over four years. I've worked with families from all cities and townships, and even in my relatively short four years, I've seen a dramatic change in the challenges faced by our children due to the still escalating opioid crisis. It is unlike anything our children have ever faced before. Children and families are a key element to our community. The disruption to families from what we now think of as traditional abuse and neglect is moderate, and in most cases, correctable. With assistance and support from all members of the safety net, our intervention strengthens the parents so that they may resume parenting, while building even more bridges and connections to the community that can provide help and support. With the opioid crisis, the disruption is no longer moderate, it is severe and often startling. It's traumatizing for children to see their parents fall into the grip of opioid addiction so fast and so completely. They are scared and worried for their parents, and unsettled about who will take care of them. It is a memory that will last a very long time. The heroin epidemic must always include a discussion about children, and how they are being stranded right here in Lorraine County because of this intractable addiction is taking away their parents in an alarming rate. Substance abuse has always been a characteristic in many of our cases. The ability to, to parent is constricted when mom or dad is under the influence of alcohol or drugs. Today, most of the neglect or abuse cases that I service, where a parent has an addiction, involves opiates or opioids. Currently, six of the twelve families that I am working with are involved, that I am involved with includes some element of opiate addiction. By the time we get the call to help intervene on behalf of the children, a parent who is addicted at any, to any of the opioids is at or close to rock bottom. We are called to homes where a parent is overdosed and the children were present. We are called to hospitals where infants are born with opioids in their system. We get called when someone notices that drugs or paraphernalia is left accessible to children. We get called out when the parent dies from their overdose, and we need to pick up the children and help them to a relative's home. Often, we work with extended family members to see who can take on parenting those children of the parents who are no longer able to do so because of their addiction. I've talked with grandparents who have struggled to help their adult addicted child, as well as assume custody of their grandchildren, with a mixture of both relief and profound sadness. Aunts and uncles, or even older adult siblings, have had to step up and take care of those children. Since January 2015, I've had four parents on my caseload die from their opioid addiction. It is no longer uncommon for us caseworkers to be attending funerals of the parents that we work so hard to get into treatment. That being said, not all of our cases that include parental opioid addiction are hopeless. Early in my career, I worked with a family where both parents were addicted to heroin. That addiction started from the prescription to pain medication prescribed for a sports injury. Their children stayed with relatives while the parents went through treatment. For about a year and a half, the parents worked hard to go through treatment and recover to resume parenting. The case was successful, closed over a year ago, and both parents continue to maintain their sobriety. Their success is rare. Unfortunately, in most of our cases, reunification cannot happen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning, and I hope my remarks today have helped bring a community and family perspective to this crisis.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Dr. Evans, the Lorraine County Coroner. Hopefully, we're going to learn where we're going today, but, you know, part of what I'm going to do is, is tell you how we got to where we're at today. As you can see, I have a very small department, and a few years ago, my small department found that we were in the middle of a major problem, the opiate epidemic. You can see from the numbers, we started to have a little bit of, of an uptick in our drug overdose deaths in 2010, 2011, then all of a sudden, in 2012, it tripled. We went from twenty to over sixty, and we said, when it first happened, we said, what, what's going on? You know, there must be bad drugs on the street, that's why we tripled. So we tested, we had them tested drugs, and no, these are our normal drugs. Something is going on, something has changed all of a sudden in 2012 in Lorraine County. The only thing that we noticed was when we looked at who was dying, this was no longer, you know, an inner-city, just Lorraine and Elyria, inner-city lower socioeconomic class, this was more white, suburban, people that were employed. It was almost fifty-fifty male, female, which is unusual, because in, in days gone by, drug overdose deaths were normally male, eighty percent of the time. All of a sudden, we were seeing a lot of women dying from drug overdose deaths. So he said, something's wrong, what's going on? Why has this changed? Why are we seeing this huge number? And why has the demographics changed? And when you look into it, what you find is, we just got caught up in the, it's a pandemic. This is not just an epidemic in Lorraine County, as, as other people have said, this is a problem for the entire world. I mean, over six-hundred people are dying every day in the world from a drug overdose. When I first started doing this, I had out my slide, there was one to two people were dying every week in Lorraine County. Well, unfortunately, now it's two to three, and I'm thinking about putting it to three to four, because, you know, our numbers in Lorraine County are going up and up and up. And when you look at the statistics, when I first started this, Ohio was like eight or nine in drug overdose deaths. Unfortunately, now, we're in the top five, along with our, our neighboring states, West Virginia, Kentucky, and Pennsylvania, are all in the top five of the United States in drug overdose deaths. And so that puts us right in this epicenter of this pandemic that's going on, and so we're, we're being, you know, it's not surprising that we're being designated as a trouble spot, because we're right in the middle of this area, we're, we're in deep trouble. This is the face of the problem to me. This is, this is, for people may recognize this picture, but it was from East Liverpool from last year, a grandmother and her boyfriend overdosed in their car with the grandson, the five-year-old grandson sitting in the backseat, and this is the face of the problem. This shows, you know, the family destruction that we're seeing, you know, and the face of that little child that's in the backseat, the haunting stare that he has, that's looking, basically looking at us to say, you know, the children are saying, what are we going to do? How are we going to get out of this? And so, it's, things like we're doing today, hopefully, we're going to make a difference. The other thing about this picture is the grandmother and her boyfriend were both saved by Narcan from the police department, and we can kind of pat Lorraine County on the back for that, because we were the test case to start having police officers carry Narcan, and after it was successful in Lorraine County, it spread to the rest of the state, and so grandma and her boyfriend were both saved by Narcan from the police officers, basically by something that was started in Lorraine County. And as someone else mentioned, we've saved over three-hundred people in Lorraine County, our police officers have. So, there is things we can do, we just, you know, we, we need to keep working. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results, so it's good for us to try new things and do, do different things. So, I'm hopeful that this meeting today will get something new started. Back to our tripling, as you remember, we tripled from 2011 to 2012, and as you can see on the graph, probably, you know, after 2012, we leveled off into the sixties, and I think that was because of Narcan program, the police officers were giving the Narcan, and so it didn't completely save everybody, but at least leveled it off and stopped the exponential climb that we'd been seeing. Unfortunately, as you can see, in 2016, we doubled again. We went to one-hundred-and-thirty-two in 2016. And in fact, if we look at a little bit of an expanded graph, when you go back from 2000 to 2009, we averaged in Lorraine County about twelve and a half overdose deaths, and then all of a sudden, we bumped up to sixty, and then last year, we went to one-hundred-and-thirty-two. So that's ten times the number of people normally dying. Unfortunately, for 2017, we're on a rate to double again. On 2017, we're on a rate to hit two-hundred or more, and so that's twenty times our normal level. So, I mean, this, this epidemic is just out of control. Why is it out of control? Fentanyl. You know, P- It's a synthetic opiate that is, is 80 to 100 times more powerful than morphine, also 50 times more powerful than heroin. And unfortunately, it's easily made. And what's happening is, as M. was saying, the drug dealers found that you don't have to depend on growing poppies anymore and making heroin. Now, you can have a kitchen science scientist make up fentanyl and its analogues in the kitchen sink, basically. And so what the dealers are doing is they're adding the fentanyl or replacing the heroin with fentanyl or adding it to it. And so because the users don't realize they're taking something that's 50 times as strong, they're overdosing dying. And so that's why, you know, we doubled last year and we're going to double again this year probably. So I'm basically echoing some of the statistics that M. was giving also. If you look in 2016, fentanyl was the number one drug. You know, all of our drug overdoses, 90% of them are mixed drug overdoses, they have more than one drug involved, but fentanyl was involved with 74 of our drug overdoses. Cocaine is number two and maybe the DEA can tell me why all of a sudden, we're seeing so much cocaine. As somebody else said, you know, we've had cocaine problems in the past. In the last 10 or 15 years, we didn't have as much cocaine in Lorraine County. In fact, I went back a few years and I had one overdose death five years ago with cocaine. Now all of a sudden, I had 51 or 55 with cocaine last year. So actually, heroin is number three in Lorraine County right now. And so, things have changed a little bit and it's getting worse instead of better. Opiates are short-term pain relief, lifetime addiction. Some of the people have already mentioned that, you know, a lot of people started their opiate addiction with prescriptions that they got from their physician or from their dentist. And then once they started it, they became addicted and were unable to get off. We're doing a lot of work trying to encourage patients not to request it, encourage doctors not to prescribe it because unfortunately, if you get addicted, it's a lifetime of addiction. And as we see, it's not going to end up good. I use this slide because it, it shows the contrast of the spring and the hope, but it shows also the agony of defeat, basically, with the cemetery. When I first started doing this, I used the cemetery because it had the number of people that had died in Lorraine County from an opiate overdose. Unfortunately, we've outgrown the cemetery. I'm going to have to get a new cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
And also with Medicine Cabinet, this last April, the very last one we had, just for Lorraine County, we recovered over 4,000 pounds, actually two tons, which was an all-time record for us and I'm sure that's going to continue. But that's just from a lot of hard work, everybody in here promoting this and Elaine's group doing it for us and getting that word out. So, a lot of things we've been doing for years are starting to take hold. It may not show it all the way across the board because things are deteriorating in other areas faster than we can stay up with it. But our task force is just one out of 41 out of the entire state, represents about 90% of the counties, and every one of them are having basically the same problem we are today. So, just so you know. But Commissioners, following all the reports we heard here today, it's clear Lorraine County is at its risk. The drug problem is growing and we need to explore more collaborative ways to aggressively pursue traffickers. And that's our intention. And we want to obviously put a lot of effort in trying to get, the guys are trafficking this stuff. That's what all the coalition forces are doing together, trying to get intelligence to identify those people. And that's where our efforts are going to be placed. We need to focus on cutting off drug traffickers and dealers from doing business in our community. And we need to raise awareness and education about the issue to the entire community for prevention and recovery support. Additionally, we need to make sure we have the talent needed to adequately address this epidemic. I'm pleased to present to you a coalition of partners that are coming together to combat this issue. Here are our partners, all fighting this crisis and are part of this coalition. Many you heard from today and the list will continue to grow.
Do you have somebody on the slides, Dennis?
I thought somebody was.
Give us a second.
Okay.
Tracy to the rescue.
There you go. Thank you. To complement the efforts of all these partners, we have identified a set of Phase One activities that we will be pursuing in order to better fight the business of drug traffickers and dealers in our community. I am pleased to share them with you today as part of this announcement. First one is unite with federal partners. We'll be working more closely with the DEA and bringing their resources directly into our community to work alongside our law enforcement agents. This is an incredibly important and vital resource for us, which significantly expands our bandwidth at the local level. In addition, we have the One Roof Strategy. In doing so, it will be critical that we coordinate all the law enforcement efforts and fully utilize these resources and technology support. We can achieve this by locating some of our coalition partners under one roof with the tools needed to stay on top of drug traffickers and dealers and make Lorraine County a place they don't want to do business. Right now, we are fragmented and under-equipped to stay ahead of the very sophisticated and highly resourced drug traffickers. Currently in our building, which most of you know, it's impossible for us to expand even with the technologies and the manpower to address this appropriately. Therefore, we'll be placing this coordinated effort in a facility adjacent to the new 911 location on Burns Road on the fringe of the LCC campus so that we have direct collaboration and can take advantage of the technological infrastructure of the 911 center, including the 300-foot telecommunications tower. The building expands our capabilities to house a network of agencies, partners working alongside in real time and leveraging all the available technology and tools most effectively. This One Roof Strategy is made possible because of our long history of working with Lorraine County Community College through a pending partnership agreement that is presented for your consideration, assigning this strategic facility for this specific purpose. Additionally, we are building closer relationships with law enforcement in each community. As you heard in the presentation, this affects every city and town in Lorraine County. We have to work more closely together and leverage everyone's resources.
Sheriff Phil Stomety, I'm back. Also, finally, we want, we need the greater awareness, prevention and recovery resources that includes a talented workforce to assist in this effort. We are delighted to be working with Lorraine County Community College to address this need. Dr. Marcia Ballinger will be sharing some of the specific programs that need, need help us build the talent base needed to address our county's drug epidemic. But this isn't all, this is Phase One. There will be more actions to come as this coalition grows. I now want to turn it over to hear some insights from a few of the coalition partners, starting with Dr. Marcia Ballinger, President of Lorraine County Community College, to share higher education's perspective and more about their partnership in this effort. Dr. Ballinger, please come to the podium. She's a great lady that cares a lot about Lorraine County, we know that.
Yep. Thank you, Sheriff Stomety. Hi, Marcia Ballinger, Lorraine County Community College. And thank you Commissioners Kokowski, Kalo and, and Lundee. I am pleased to be here today and I am joined by the Chairman of Lorraine County Community College, Board of Trustees Terry Good, and also Trustees Kevin Flanagan and Trustee Mike Sherman. So, as we've witnessed today, Lorraine County's drug epidemic is an important and critical issue that is facing our community, one that affects all of us, including the students at Lorraine County Community College and their families. So, I'd like to take you back to the spring of 2015 when I was serving as the Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs. And we were partnering with Locata as well as with Elaine Jorgas. And we were opening on our campus a care center, which was the Center for Addiction and Recovery Education. And I have with me today, Charlene Delapola, who is seated at the back. And Charlene was a student at the time in our Human Services Program and she has since gone on and she has also completed our university partnership program. And we were very concerned about the students on our campus who had expressed their, how addiction was affecting them. And going through addiction and recovery and the issues that they had and needing a place to come together, needing services as they were coming back to school or they were enrolled in school. And how difficult it was to be able to try to get their lives back on track. And so, we created a, an opportunity for them to, to have services on campus as well as to be able to help one another. And Charlene, having gone through an educational program, we have a certificate program that Elaine and Tom Stubber actually helped us to create. And so, we were the first community college in the state to create a program like that and also to have a student-run recovery center on a community college campus. And as we fight this epidemic and we are on the front line of doing programs like that, we believe that having our students working out in the field is a way for us to help with that education continuum where they can go on then for their associate's degrees and their bachelor's degrees in social work. Charlene is now going on for her PhD in social work so that we are working to address the program. Our care center also is a way for us to serve the community. We know that family members, as Elaine was talking about, continue to need those services to help deal with, with the issues that are impacting them. So, we also are on the front line with our Police Academy. And as you see, our cadets are here today and our cadets and our Police Academy are at the forefront with, with the, with the sheriff's offices, with our, with our law enforcement. In fact, we have 18 who will be graduating in one month. We currently have four who are current police officers. Our Police Academy has the highest graduation rate in the state of Ohio, so we're very, very proud of that. And they are at a 91% graduation rate. I want to take you back to our Vision 2020, which our community has helped to shape and create. And that is to ensure that the academic programs that we develop at Lorraine County Community College are always addressing community needs. And that is because community is our middle name. And so, as we are fighting with you this drug epidemic, we will continue to ensure that every program that we deliver at Lorraine County Community College and the services that we provide are spot-on for this community. So while our Police Academy and our cadets and our addiction certificate are clearly designed for what we are talking about today, we also know that our allied health and nursing programs are those that are also serving the drug epidemic and that are working with ME and that are working with those who are serving the prosecutor's office and that are serving the Children's Services and others. Every program that we have is in direct need for this community and we will continue to do that. We, as, as Chief Deputy Kavanaugh has said, having the coalition partners under one roof and in close proximity, in fact, adjacent to the 911 center in the Great Lakes Technology Park will also be absolutely critical to providing internship opportunities right on the campus of Lorraine County Community College. And it is a pleasure and we are so willing to partner and thrilled to partner to give those hands-on applied learning experiences so that the talent that is needed in our community to be able to fulfill the promises that we have for the citizens of Lorraine County. I want to thank all the coalition partners for what they do and who are working so hard to combat the crisis that we have in our community. This is such difficult work and while we are your community college and we are here to support and to contribute to the efforts and all the ways that we can, and we are so proud to partner with you in this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you.
James Goodwin, DEA.
And Eric Kokonoski, DEA. Just a final thought, this is a, the problem that we're experiencing right now is a public health problem. It's never been more important, right now, that we all work together. So, we find that when we work together, we could, we could accomplish goals. So, that is probably the biggest theme to take away for us, is we're working together with all of our, all of our partners. And a wonderful example is, is right now in, in our north, north area of Ohio, the northern district. And Group Supervisor Eric Kokonoski can speak of that, Akron and Summit.
Just like to thank you guys for bringing everyone together. I, I think this issue is not going to be, we're not going to wrest our way out of it. We need to bring prevention, education and law enforcement together and I think that's what this is going to do. And so, having this opportunity to partner with the state and local agencies here in Lorraine County and to better service the constituents, the members of this community is, is just a great opportunity and we look forward to partnering with you guys.
Thank you. We just want those drug dealers to know that they're not welcome here in our community and this is going to be, I believe, a great deterrent for that.
We just want to thank the Commissioners and the College for helping put this on for us and bring this coalition together. So if you have any questions of us, if not, we're concluding what we're, we present today.
Thank you. Want to open it up to my fellow Commissioners and Administrator, if you'd like to make any comments?
Sure, we've always got all kinds of things to say. Like to thank everyone here today who attended, especially our partners from the College, working with the Board, DEA, our local law enforcement. You know, we can't, as you said, we can't wrest our way out of this. We have to treat those with the addiction problems. But I'd like to see hellfire and brimstone when it comes to the dealers. Bringing you guys in here, I think, is going to be key to cleaning up our neighborhoods. Being from Lorraine, I understand the devastation. My wife works in the courts there locally. Plenty of my friends whose children have gone through the addiction and also, they've lost. I just see this as a partnership that we can put together that will really make a difference. I'd like to thank the taxpayers of Lorraine County for helping fund our Drug Task Force. If we can continue to do that as we move forward, so we have the revenues and the dollars to actually make these things happen. But again, hats off to everybody. I'm looking for a very cooperative arrangement amongst all our police departments and our county Drug Task Force, along with the DEA. And welcome to town, Eric. Thank you.
Commissioner Lundee?
I just wanted to add that I think it's important for us to always know that very good people end up very addicted. Very good people end up very addicted. I think the public perception is that those who end up being addicted in our county are already, I guess, the troublemakers in the county. And that's, that's simply not the case. I think as Lane pointed out, four out of five of the heroin users actually start with prescription drugs. When I was serving as a state representative, I remember receiving a letter that really jarred me and, and then a follow-up conversation I had with a grandmother here in Elyria. And she told me of the story of having this beautiful granddaughter. She said her granddaughter was just like an angel. And her granddaughter ended up, I guess, dating the wrong guy who was in the drugs. She later found herself addicted to drugs. And then this granddaughter who used to go out of her way to help grandma, ended up swearing at grandma, even threatening her, even stealing her jewelry. And it was all due to drugs. The heroin epidemic isn't a city problem, as we talked about today. It's a wealthy suburban problem. It's a rural township problem, but most of all, it's our community's problem. The drug dealers have killed too many of our loved ones and we want you to know that you can't run, you can't hide. And her granddaughter ended up, I guess, dating the wrong guy who was in the drugs. She later found herself addicted to drugs. And then this granddaughter, who used to go out of her way to help grandma, ended up swearing at grandma, even threatening her, even stealing her jewelry. And it was all due to drugs. The heroin epidemic isn't a city problem, as we talked about today. It's a wealthy suburban problem. It's a rural township problem, but most of all, it's our community's problem. The drug dealers have killed too many of our loved ones and we want you to know that you can't run, you can't hide, and justice will find you. Reality is, as we talked about today, reality is you can't wrest your way out of this. And if there's more work to be done through the education process of our youth, through those who need early help, know they need that early help. But a big unsolved piece of this puzzle still is drug treatment beds. Drug treatment beds are badly needed in this county and we will continue to look for a solution. Finally, as a proud graduate of Lorain County Community College, I'm even more proud today of our community college. Our college always puts our community first and this partnership doesn't come together without the cooperation of Lorain County Community College. Thank you for making our community a better place for our families and for always putting the community first. To combat a crisis in our community, we must all work together. It's a tough challenge, but I believe we will meet that challenge.
Thank you. Okay, let's make a motion to approve the partnership agreement with the Lorain County Community College.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Now we can sign.
Now we can sign.
I'm gonna give an opportunity to anybody wishing to come up to address the board about this subject. I'll give anybody an opportunity, three minutes, if you could keep it under three minutes, if you would like to come up, now's your chance. Seeing none? Okay, I guess we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Thank you all for coming.